Right, so we spared you the excitements of the East Block fire alarm.
Indeed.
And just to say, we do need to rise at 4.15, so I'm anxious that we have parity. But it does seem to me that you've made your submissions on ground two. I mean, do by all means expand them, but just bear in mind...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to be very much longer. A couple of key points, let me see if I can sort of nail it down and get a few key points. Just preliminary, my lord, just a point that my lord left us with, which I just come back to. This point arises first logically, that's right, in this sense, just for all members of the court. If we're right about this point, then the duty, the original duty continued to subsist, and therefore the questions about ordinary residence for the purposes of the new duty just don't arise. That's correct. The reason it's addressed last in the decision and in all of the pleadings is because the Secretary of State has always taken the view that the Corn point is quite important. This is effectively was a lead determination. And indeed, another determination was given at the same time, touching on these points, but where this particular point, it was identical on the facts in most respects. It was a second detention, but this point didn't arise. So again, that decision was decided in the same way.
Well, it wouldn't be the first time that one court might need to reorder.
No, no, fine, I mean, how the court did is obviously for you. It's safe to say this, that we would, but we don't, the fact that it's in the last place doesn't, is not denying the basic logical point that my lord made. I do just make this point, and maybe the court is not thinking anything else anyway, but I think for what I hope are obvious reasons, the Secretary of State would like you to decide both points.
Well, we understand that.
Because they're quite important points, and you know, here we are, and we've done all the work and all of that, so.
We're not going to take it the easy way out.
No, no, quite, I wouldn't have thought you would, but you know, I just mentioned it, so, yeah.
Good. That still doesn't detract from the fact that it is illogical to deal with it any other way.
Fine.
And possibly we wouldn't even be here if they had dealt with it in any other way. And what the Secretary of State thinks is important could then reflect that back in saying, if that was so important, we should have done the Act differently in 2014. So I'm afraid that argument doesn't...
No, no, I mean, it's not really, I'm not really making an argument as such, I'm just reflecting on that.
But I understand the point. We won't, as my lady says, this isn't a court that ducks the points, whatever the logical sequence of doing it.
But how you deal with it is obviously much... So the basic premise of the ground, then, as I've said, is that the section one, and these points are not live, section one, section 117 duty subsists. When JG is redetained, it continues in existence. And also, as the judge, I think, accepted, that part of the reason that's desirable is precisely so that you can have things like care planning going on to think about what happens on release. Now, if it then turns out that it becomes clear that the person is going to be detained for years and years, then at that point you discharge the duty, but only if you have the conscious decision. With that in mind, can we just turn to look at how the judge dealt with it? And then I can make my short submissions on the back of the case. It's 102 of the core bundle, the appeal bundle, page 102. It's paragraph, from paragraph 145 onwards of the judgment, the court has that. Yeah. So he says, first sentence, I reject proposition three although for slightly different reasons to those suggested by Mr Parkhill. That sentence aside, what then follows in paragraphs 145, 146 and 147 is what I've already told you, is accepting our position on various points. And I won't ask you to read it now, but can I ask the court to read that carefully? Because we say it's correct and it sets up what follows. He then goes on to say, and indeed paragraph 147 makes the point there might be other reasons why it's desirable to have ongoing 117 duties to someone who's been redetained. Again, it says 145, in my view, the answer to proposition three is that as a matter of construction, sections 117, 2 and 3 contemplate that one CCG and one local social services owe the person described in section 117, the 117 to duty. We agree with that, so it's obviously right that you only have one duty, whether it be the first or the second is what's at issue. And he continues on, and then he continues on in 148 and 149. And I won't read it all out, but in effect, what he says is this, I suggest, is how you can characterise the reasoning. He says, well, notwithstanding the continuation of the first duty up to the point of discharge, once you get to the point of discharge, the new duty arises. And that, this is my phrase, but I think, I hope it captures it, that crowds out the first duty. That's the logic of it. Now, the problem with that, with my submission, is first of all, the statute doesn't say anything of the kind. I accept the statute doesn't deal with it, in other words, but the statute certainly doesn't say...
Did he suggest it? Did he refer to any particular words? No?
No, I don't think so, no.
Right.
He says it's implicit, not in that sense, my lady, I think he says, I think he would say, the logic of what he's saying is, well, because the statute mandates the new duty to arise, therefore it must crowd out the first duty. But my answer to that is, well, it's no more, it's no more obviously that way round than the other way round. Because the alternative way of looking at it, which we say is correct, is to say actually the section, the original duty crowds out the second duty. In other words, the second duty just doesn't arise, because there's no need for it, because the first duty has continued to subsist. Now, the statute doesn't tell you which of those ways of looking at it is correct. No doubt Parliament is one of those many things, certainly in this statute, but perhaps in many statutes, where Parliament hasn't really addressed its line to that particular point.
Well, this may be more fair enough than the first, because this is more of a reshare shape point on the facts. Because this point only arises where you've got, you know, juggling periods of detention and release and more periods of detention.
Yes.
Probably not unreasonable, Parliament...
Oh, no, no, absolutely, it's entirely understandable, I mean, Parliament sets a general framework and it's often the case that courts have to work out, well, how would that have applied in this rather special situation that no one thought of?
Well, one might reasonably expect, if you were interested in the field of mental health, that a lot of people are going to go in as a section three, come out again, go back in, and that's what happens.
Well, that is, first of all, my lord is right, that is what happens, that's definitely right. I mean, as to the other point, well, perhaps it's not for me to say whether Parliament should have thought about it or not. The fact is, we've got to deal with the fact that on the face of it, it didn't... Yeah, yeah, no, my lord is absolutely right, but the simple fact is Parliament didn't in any explicit way address it. And we all know as lawyers that that's not uncommon in this...
But I'm not sure that it didn't address it, because you say the statute says nothing like it, but doesn't the statute say the opposite of this? Because it speaks of effectively a continuing duty until, in a different context, a particular point in time.
That's right.
And it could be said, as my lord, Lord Justice William Davis says, it's very common for people to go in and out. And you don't want to have ordinary residents' decisions being taken weekly, chopping and changing and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, no.
Isn't there a logic to having a routine duty which endures throughout on one single authority from inception? That's the policy decision that's...
Unless and until they take that decision, it's not needed. Absolutely, well, my lady, that's, I mean, that was my basic answer to this whole proposition three argument, and I maintain it for this part of the proposition.
But how do you square, and it's not your position, but how does one square the judge's finding with the words of section, subsection?
We say you can't, and we say that's a problem. We say that once he's accepted, as he does in 146 and 147, that the duty terminates upon the making of a conscious decision, he should, as it were, have stuck with that and applied it equally to this situation.
Perhaps the argument is that it's a question of construing the duty.
Yeah.
What's the duty on discharge?
Well...
The opposite argument is that who's got the duty? The local social services authority.
Yeah.
And who's the local social services authority? It's whoever it is immediately before the person was detained. That person was ordinary resident in that local social services authority.
Sure, but my lord, but I think that, well, sorry, my lady's getting... Well, I don't know if I'm going to say what my lady said, but the answer, I think, to that is that, assume I'm right up to this point, so duty, first duty has subsisted up until at least the point of discharge from the second detention. And the statute, I'm right, the statute, the basic reason, part of the reason for that is because the statute requires a conscious decision to terminate, that much I think I get from the judgment. So that, so in relation to that duty, the statute tells us who the relevant social services authority is, and in this case, it's Worcestershire, it's the P. And then, and that, and so that, so my lord's point, which is, well, the statute tells you who the social services authority is, if I may say so especially, begs the question of which, in relation to which of the duties, because the statute tells you, gives you a different answer for the different duties. If it's right, as I accept it must be right, that only one duty can subsist at a time, then what the statute doesn't tell you in these terms is, well, does one, how does one, which of the duties, as it were, takes priority? Just because we got to a situation where, up until, I've forgotten the date of release, but it's whenever it is, in November...
November 2015.
Exactly, I've forgotten.
Well, I say release, that's discharge for the section three order.
Quite right, discharge, so the point of discharge, up until that point, the first duty exists. Who's the local social services authority in relation to that duty? Well, it's definitely Worcestershire, we'd no dispute about that. And the statute tells you, and the statute tells you the only way that duty comes to an end, this is my lady's point, is by a conscious decision. And there's certainly not a conscious decision at this point, nor could there be a basis for a conscious...
If there'd been a finding that's, I mean, as you said, it's inconsistent, one of your points is that the conclusion is inconsistent with the previous findings, that the first duty continues not only upon detention but during detention.
Exactly, exactly.
It seems to arguably, I'm going to hear the argument the other way, that against the grain, discharge is the least likely...
Well, that's right.
Policy moment.
Exactly right. And if you think about it, exactly, and whilst I don't want to base this all on policy, so there's a, it's the least likely candidate in terms of the logic of all of this, what the statute says. There's no warrant for saying that for, it's very odd to conclude that someone's discharge from detention can positively release, bring to an end a duty. That's frankly bizarre in terms of the kind of basic structure of these statutory provisions. But it's also very odd in policy terms, because after all, part of the reason why it's desirable that the duty subsists during the second detention is precisely to allow for care planning. But then you've got, you've got allowed for care planning by authority, potentially authority act, and then on the point of discharge, all their care planning becomes irrelevant because the authority B takes over, and that's a very, very odd position in terms of policy. If I'm right, if I'm right up to that stage of the argument, that's a very odd conclusion to reach.
Well, certainly, looking at subsection three, the language of immediately before being detained.
Yeah.
The logic, if there is any logic, would be, well, that's when the second local authority takes over, at the point of detention, rather than the point of discharge.
Yes, 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 exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's obviously, I think I would be overstating it to say that one could get an absolutely clear answer from the statutory provision.
But in answer to my lord's point...
My lord agrees. But on the other hand, if you, I'm so sorry, my lady.
Would you accept, sorry, when you agreed with my lord just now, that that will be the more obvious point? You don't say that that is the point.
No, because, and that's the argument I succeeded on and below.
Yes, accorded it.
Yes, that's the argument I succeeded on and below. But it would be, it makes, I mean, if I could put it like this, I would be more worried about the argument that, I mean, I rejected it and I succeeded in it, but it's more worrying the argument that it comes to an end at that point than the, it's very odd to say it comes to an end on the point of release. Because of course, that's, there's no doubt that that's the very moment against which the full need for aftercare services, resurfaces and the basic duty. That's true that the new duty comes in to take its place, but it still makes for a very odd situation.
None of which you had the opportunity to say.
None of which I had the opportunity to say, but as I say, I'm not, I'm not grining my axe about that.
You're saying it now.
I'm saying it.
And on this, and going back to this question of it needed a conscious decision.
Yeah.
This is, this is the end bit, which I have to confess, I haven't focused on, because, sure, obviously it's not initial appeal, but by way of background.
Yes.
This is from a paragraph 155 onwards, where the judge deals with...
Oh, well, this is about the facts, yeah.
Not being a valid decision.
Yes.
Because he says, much, much earlier on, he says, I'll come back to the question of the notice.
Yes, so what happened, in a nutshell?
And is this where he comes back to, because he doesn't give us a reference. Is this where he comes back to the notice of termination? Where does he deal with that?
Well, I, so he deals, I mean, I haven't, I haven't really re-engaged with this bit of the judgment, I have to be completely honest, but...
Well, the thing is, if we're being required to set out the law clearly, it's always a good idea to try and work out what is and isn't in issue.
Yeah, so, as I say, so what happened, and this is what the judge is explaining, I think, in these paragraphs, 155 onwards. What happened was when the Secretary of State identified this as a possible basis on which he might determine the appeal, might determine the review, he wrote to the parties before reaching his decision and said, look, what do you think about this? Was there a conscious decision? And in any event, as a matter of law, what do you think about this word deciding the case? And they made submissions about it. And I think I'm right in saying that Worcestershire didn't write back at that stage and say that they had made a conscious decision.
No, it was a witness statement.
Yes, but when they brought the judicial review, they put in a witness statement which said, we did.
Par 156.
Yes, and the basis on which they, the sort of contemporaneous evidence for that was a notice of termination of JG's accommodation. And we said, and the judge accepted, well, that's not a conscious decision that she doesn't need the services, that's just a notice to quit the particular accommodation, that's obviously not what the statute requires. But that's how that point, and as I say, there's no cross appeal on that, so, does that answer my lord's question?
Yeah, it's all mucky though, isn't it? Standard form, simply instructing it, single line without explanation, to cease to supply services, no other evidence submitted. 157, given that the defendant was told that JG was never discharged from the provision of 117 support, it cannot be said that he erred in law and proceeding on that basis. Well, one understands that submission, but again, it's showing the narrow, but this is judicial review, so it's showing the narrow, the narrow basis.
But he deals with it also at 158, he goes on to say, in any event, they were right not to suggest otherwise. It's a bit confusing, 158, but he says basically, they were right not to say that they'd made a conscious decision, because the base...
He's saying it's an administrative decision.
He's saying it's a purely administrative decision, it was, as I say, it was effectively, it was a notice to quit the accommodation. Or I think it wasn't even a notice to quit, it was a notice of, it was a notice to the service, to the accommodation provider to terminate the accommodation, I think. It wasn't even given to JG.
And they ceased to fund it.
And they, yeah, and they ceased to fund it. But that was about funding the particular accommodation, which they can do when they move you to a new accommodation, so it's a totally different...
Yeah, but I mean, that presumably was the main cost at the time that they sent it.
But I mean, that's very much, that is, that is a point, which is very much about the facts of this particular case.
Yeah, no, I see.
And so that's why I haven't really re-engaged with it, where there's no appeal on it.
No. That's the trouble with public law, nobody ever cares about the facts.
Well, I cared about the facts when I had to argue it.
Everybody's always so keen on telling us that this is a vital point of principle.
Yes.
And don't worry about enough.
Well, I did care about these facts when I had to argue the point, but I thought I didn't in this talk.
No, I understand that, no, 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 I'm sorry, no, no, I just wanted...
I like to win cases on the facts.
I just wanted to get where it was that the judge dealt with, and that's the solution.
That's the answer.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
Can I just give you one last thought and then I shall sit down? So I've made the point about the structure of 117, I've made the point about, so that it's just illogical to say that of all places, you terminate the duty on the point of discharge, that's just odd. I've made the point that in policy terms, it's very odd, if the justification for maintaining the section 117 duty is care planning, it's then very odd in policy terms to bring the thing to an end at the very point when that care planning would bear fruition. I mean, the other general point I think I can make is going, just to think back to Cornwall, paragraph 54 and 55 of Cornwall, which we've looked at, we don't need to turn them up again, where Lord Carmworth talks about the general, the general desirability in these sorts of statutory schemes of kind of continuity of provision. And this is, obviously Cornwall's much more distant from ground two than it is from ground one, but nevertheless, that thought, I suggest, plays out here as well.
Well, that was the point my lady raised earlier, continuing duty.
Yeah, exactly, so for the same reasons, it's obviously, other things being equal, it's not desirable that you chop and change between care providers, and especially, my lord, my lord's point, that, you know, people do in some situations come back and forth between detention and discharge. It's really fundamentally undesirable that they're bouncing around between different providers because they get placed in a different authority on each occasion. And that is actually, for people who are being redetained and redetained and redetained, and I've certainly seen one case where someone was redetained three or four times in a row. Really highly undesirable. Now, that can't tell you what the statute means by itself, but it certainly has a role to play if you're to the extent that the statute is silent. I think that may end my oral examination on ground two.
Well, I don't have any questions.
No, don't go on.
None of us have any more questions, thank you very much.
I'm grateful.
Mr Bealey. Yes, Mr Parkhill, I hope that it is a slightly uneven division of the time, but we've traversed quite a lot of grounds, so I'm hoping that that's not going to inconvenience you.
My lord, I don't think it will, thank you. I'm very grateful to Mr Bealey for letting me set out the issues, which I think can enable me to deal with things rather more briefly, because of the subject.
Fine.
What else to me? And with your lesson, my lord, may I deal with the second issue first?
Please do.
Because I think that is actually the primary question, despite the Secretary of State's interest in the first. Can I invite the court to, well, my submission in respect of this, which is proposition three, is that in part, it found the answer in how the judge dealt with proposition two. So can I invite the court to look at how the judge dealt with that, which is core bundle tab seven, page 98?
Yeah. Proposition two being that it was the Secretary of State's case that you went back to the first period of detention.
Indeed, yes.
And the judge said no.
Indeed, and just to be fair to the Secretary of State, the submission was, was put in precise terms, that where there's been a detention followed by an uninterrupted period of 117 provision, you then go back to the first detention, when asking the question, where is the person ordinarily resident before being detained, you insert the word first, and yes, as my lord says, the judge said the answer to that is no. And we see at 135 the basis for the submission, third line down, essentially it is that section 117.3 is ambiguous or unclear as to the position where a person is subject to more than one period of detention. And then we see over at 136 the conclusion, where the judge says, I reject proposition two, and it seems to me that section 117 contemplates that on each occasion if a person is to cease to be detained under section three or any of the other provisions. The question is, the appropriate aftercare services will arise and will be addressed by which bodies owe the section 117.2 duty at that time. And I would invite the court to underline those words. And consistently with this, the responsibility for the services to be provided after that period of detention will fall on the area in which they were ordinarily resident when the decision to detain them was made, i.e. immediately before that period of detention. I do not consider that the words of the provision are ambiguous or unclear. So clear conclusion on ground two, that there is a fresh duty that arises wherever there is a second or subsequent detention.
Yeah.
And of course, there is no appeal against the way the judge disposed of that issue. And so if we then look to how the judge approached section, the third proposition, so the cessation of duty question, it's clear, I say, that he used his conclusions on issue two as building blocks for his conclusion on this, and we see that if we look at page 148, sorry, page 102, par 148. We see in my view, the answer to proposition three is that as a matter of construction, sections 117.2 and 3 contemplate that one clinical commission group and one local authority social services will owe the duty. And then he says this, and that they will become subject to that duty when it is triggered under section 117.1. The duty will be triggered by the discharge of the person from section three detention, they're released from hospital, and there is therefore a need to identify which bodies owe the duty at this stage, and on each occasion that this occurs.
But the duty isn't triggered by the discharge of the person. Duty is, duty is...
Ceasing to be detained and then leaving hospital.
Yes.
And then we have, in paragraph 149, the judge says that in a case when there is a second period of detention under section three and the question of aftercare services will arise again when this person is due to be released from hospital. And then he says, as I have said in rejecting proposition two, the clinical commission group and the local authority, local social services, identified by section 117.3 in respect of the second, and the judge does the underlining for me here, the second section three detention will owe the duty to provide aftercare services arising out of that period of detention.
Is this, though, confusing duty being triggered and the question of identity? So we know the identity is not resolved by reference to discharge, we know that identity is resolved by reference to the pre-detention.
Indeed, my lady, yes, so it certainly doesn't resolve that question. This only deals with the question of whether or not a second duty arises from the second discharge. And my submission is that in dealing with proposition two, the judge clearly held that there is a duty arises every time somebody is discharged and ceases to leave hospital. And he used that conclusion under proposition two as a building block for his conclusion on proposition three. And I say at least inevitably to the conclusion that the judge reached, which is that even if there is a prior duty that exists when somebody is in hospital for a second time, a prior 117 duty, nevertheless, when they come to be discharged from this second detention, a fresh 117 duty arises. It then leaves the question, which bodies does that fall on? And that takes us back to the meaning of ordinary residence at Cornwall.
If you're moving on from that, you go back to 136, which is your point, which I completely understand, that proposition two, the last sentence, consistently with this, the responsibility for the services to be provided after that period of detention will fall on the area in which they were ordinarily resident when the decision to detain them was made, i.e. immediately before that period of detention. Does that sentence logically set up the conclusion that the fresh duty kicks in on discharge?
Well, my lord, I don't think I'm bound to concede that it could only arise on discharge because of the terms of 117, which says that the duty arises when they cease to be detained and leave hospital.
Well, that's partly a point in your favour, because you say, well, that's what the Act says.
Yes.
And so there's nothing odd in the judge's conclusion that that's when the duty kicks in. But... I mean, you, you just... I'm concerned about, if I may put it this way, I'm concerned about the hokey-cokey elements of this. That, you know, for somebody who is in the unfortunate position, as my lord has postulated, not uncommonly, of going back and forth between detention and not. It is, there is a risk that your submission might threaten... that your, your submission might threaten continuity.
My lord, I understand that. And, and I think I've, I've said two responses to it. Firstly, that this has been the way in which Section one-one-seven has been understood to operate since time began, as far as I'm aware. It's never before been suggested, this isn't the way it works. And, and, and I, and we've included in the, the authorities bundle, the guidance, which goes back until at least twenty-eleven. That's the earliest I've managed to find, which says this is how one-one-seven works. Where someone's redetained, you start from scratch again and work out who are the responsible bodies. So I well understand that there are policy reasons why it might not work like that. Although, as the Law Commission noted in respect of Hertfordshire, there were some local authorities said to the Law Commission, well, actually, it's a good thing because if we take JG's example, if she's, if the duty has essentially failed such that she needs to be redetained, it's actually a good thing that when she comes out, she has a social worker and a medical health worker employed by Swindon, rather than someone, somebody back in Worcestershire. So there are potential, I'm not saying that's right, but there are arguments both way on the policy point. The second submission I make is that, yes, there is a difficulty of people going back into hospital for relatively short periods. But the conclusion the judge reached is that the prior one-one-seven duty will only end if a new one starts. So it doesn't follow that every admission back to hospital will cancel out the prior one-one-seven duty. As Mr. Beale said, patients can go back voluntarily. If you go in voluntarily, one-one-seven doesn't arise because Section one-one-seven only applies if you've gone in on a Section Three.
It still applies.
Sorry.
Could you, you wrote previously.
Indeed.
Detained patient.
Yes. But, but this mechanism that the judge set out of cancelling that first duty and starting a fresh one wouldn't arise because there's no second one-one-seven duty that's arisen from the informal admission. And equally, patients can be compulsorily admitted and generally are in the first instance, compulsory admitted under Section Two of the Act, which is the admission for assessment. And it's a bit of a misnomer because although it's called admission for assessment, it actually entails powers of treatment, the same as the powers of treatment under Section Three. And an admission under Section Two is for up to twenty-eight days. So patients might have a, a relapse which requires admission to hospital. In many cases, that would be under Section Two. And again, because Section Two doesn't give rise to a one-one-seven duty, only Section Three does that, this mechanism that the judge settled upon wouldn't result in the prior one-one-seven duty terminating because of that Section Two admission.
On a more basic level, and forgive my ignorance. On the judge's approach, in this case, the duty, I think the judge uses the word trigger, was triggered on the release the second time from detention. Assume that's right. That would mean that it was only then, at the point of release, that Swindon were, became responsible for aftercare services.
Yes.
So theoretically, they might not have been involved in any, in any decision-making up to that point.
Yes.
Which, which sounds counterintuitive to me at any rate.
Indeed. And, and my lord, this is a feature of one-one-seven, that there is, there's no provision for prior planning, but absolutely plainly, there must be. And, and the code fills that gap by saying, and then the code of the nineteen eighty-three Act says that the discharge of one-one-seven must begin at the point of detention.
Yeah.
So you can't just say, well, my duty hasn't arisen, therefore we're not going to turn our mind to it. And, and I'm afraid, I don't think we have the authorities, but I think that that passage of the code is based on authority. It might be ex parte habe, where the court held that you, although the duty is only triggered, it, it's, it's inoperable unless there is some prior thought. So the, the authorities which are going to owe the duty must think ahead. And if we take the example of a, of a first one and only admission under Section Three, the, the problem still arises. There's no pre-existing one-one-seven duty and bodies in the, in the driving seat ready to go. And how do we solve the problem of that situation? Someone detained for the first time ever in the Section Three? Or it's met by what the code says and what ex parte habe?
So the situation, what is it? During JG's second period of detention, Swindon should have been thinking ahead during that period of detention by looking ahead to make plans. But at the same time, Worcestershire, Worcestershire is, is looking after her as well, looking at aftercare. So you've got sort of completely illogical duplication.
Well, my lady, I, I, I see that problem and, and.
No, I'm not.
It's, it's not an idea.
Don't say how, you're both being very fair and it's very helpful to, to talk this through. But I'm, I'm right about that sometimes.
Absolutely.
So that, that is.
Have I got this code, just to which you just referred?
We've only got a, an extract from the code, I think, in the authorities. I'm afraid, I don't think we've got the extract that deals with the point that I just made, my lord, that I, I haven't appreciated.
Well, don't, don't, don't take up time with it now, but it, I, I, I'm certainly not prepared to say it's irrelevant because it may not be because the, the, the point that I put to you and that my lady has just taken up is obviously a part of ground two of the appeal. So if, once we've risen this afternoon, if you could send my clerk and he can circulate it, my lord and my lady's clerk, that would be useful.
Certainly.
Just making note. Yeah, okay.
Just returning to the, the concept of there being two duties, it seems to me that it absolutely must be the case that where a patient is discharged from Section Three, irrespective of whether there's a pre-existing one-one-seven duty, it must be that having been detained under Section Three and being discharged triggers the duty in the way the judge said because that is what Section one-one-seven-one says. And it seems to me that the Secretary of State's approach is to effectively say that the Section one-one-seven duty doesn't arise in the way the judge found under Proposition Two. If there is a pre-existing one-one-seven duty still in existence. And that seems to me to involve reading words into one-one-seven, saying the duty arises when the patient is discharged and ceases to be detained, brackets, unless there is a prior duty. And that, I say, is artificial. And Secretary of State's apparent argument, as I understand it to that, would be, well, actually, what the Secretary of State says was, is that Worcester's duty continued. And Worcester, at the point when JG came to be discharged for her, on the second time, Worcester couldn't have concluded that she's not in need of one-one-seven services because she is. She's coming out of hospital and needs services. But if the judge was right to have said that a second duty arose, so we do have two, and we've got this question of which one takes priority. I accept what the Secretary of State says, the logic Secretary of State says, is Worcester couldn't have looked at this lady and said, you don't have a need for one-one-seven aftercare services. But how I ask, could Swindon have concluded that, that they didn't need to perform the duty? It, it would seem to me it's the only mechanism in this scenario by which one of the duties can come to an end is a positive decision under one-one-seven-two. It seems to me impossible how either of the two sets of bodies owing the duty on the Secretary of State's case could, could conclude that there is not a need for one-one-seven aftercare services when there plainly is. So I, I say the least artificial and neatest solution to what is a difficult provision is that the judge settled upon.
And if we take a Hertfordshire approach of sticking to the language of the statute, can you help me? How we, how we get there with Section, with that conclusion?
Well, my lady, I, I think I can do no more than what the judge said, which is that, that there is envisaged to be only one duty. And given, if we look at Section one-one-seven. One.
Page twenty-three of the authority fund.
What, what does the subsection two have to say? To, to meet your position?
Well, my lady, I don't think, I don't think subsection two helps you. I think it's really subsection one, which is about when the duty arises.
So you said it's the cease to be detained?
Yes. That's, that's what triggers. It, it's having gone through that sequence of meeting those qualifying requirements of having been detained under Section Three or Section thirty-seven and ceasing to be detained and leaving hospital. That means the one-one-seven duty arises.
But I thought we were dealing with the problem on ground three of the undisputed duties that arose on Worcestershire. That arose as a result of the first discharge. The duty is spelt out in subsection two and it doesn't stop. So that's my, I'm sorry if I didn't make it clear. So how do you, how do you terminate the first duty?
Well, my, my lady, I, I can really do no better than the judge managed on this because of course my submission, which I have to be candid, didn't find favourable to the judge and there hasn't been a cost appeal. Was that the, the duty ends when the patient is redetained.
So until such time as, yes, so that, this is, that's very helpful. So we have to add, until such time as the linky-blue shall not be so satisfied. Or satisfy the person concerned is no longer in need of such services or is redetained.
Well, that, that was my submission below, my lady, yes. That, that's the way it needed to be interpreted. And I put that on the basis that.
Yes, and that failed.
That failed.
And so what do we have to, on, on the neat position, what are the words we need to add in to subsection two?
Well, my lady, the.
Upon discharge or until the person is discharged following a second detention?
Well. My understanding of what you're saying is that you start with subsection one.
Yeah.
These are the people to whom the duty applies.
Yes.
And in our case, it's somebody detained under Section Three. Then that's the, subsection two is the duty that's owed to these people.
Yes.
The problem with the statute is, it doesn't tell you what happens if they're detained for a second time.
Indeed.
And when they're detained for a second time, looking at subsection three, they're actually ordinarily residents somewhere different to where they'd been resident before the first time.
Indeed. Yes.
And if that's right, there have to be two candidates. And, and Mr. Beale put it, I feel I say so quite attractively, well, there's the original duty and the second duty. The original duty just as easily crowns out the second duty as vice versa.
Well, I, I, I absolutely.
You, you say, no, no, logic suggests it should be the second, well, person in line.
Because I say, yes, well, there are policy reasons why that might be desirable, but primarily on the basis of Section one-one-seven-one. Section one-one-seven-one tells us that, that it applies to where someone has been detained under Section Three and they cease to be detained in a discharge. And it seems to me that if we are to say that the second duty is crowded out, or I think what Mr. Beale is saying is that it doesn't arise, but that seems to me requires us to ignore the clear terms of Section one-one-seven-one. We effectively don't apply one-one-seven-one to any case of somebody who's been detained and discharged if there was a prior duty. And that seems to me to be more artificial than the conclusion the judge reached.
So on that submission, you say you don't get beyond one-one-seven-one.
My lord, no.
Once somebody's ceased to be detained and left hospital.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The last point, and I promise you it is, for the time being, but you, you have to get beyond one because one doesn't do anything. One, one just says, this, this section applies. You just can't, one by itself doesn't go anywhere. Very interesting. It applies. And what applies? Or you say, actually, no, Section one applies and so the duty under Section Two arises.
My lady, forgive me. Yes, so, so one-one-seven-one is engaged, I say.
Right.
Whenever there is a detention under Section Three and then a discharge and a patient leaving, one-one-seven-one kicks in. And the consequence of that.
Well, no, Section one-one-seven kicks in. Section one-one-seven is engaged. That's all that one does.
Yes.
So, so Section one-one-seven-two applies.
Yes. My lady, I, I apologize.
No, 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 no. As I say, it just seems to me that, yes, one is not an empowering.
One doesn't juice anything.
No.
Well, it defines, is that right? It defines the person who is caught by Section one-one-seven. They have to meet various criteria. And so one-one-seven-two, if they meet that criteria, then applies to them. Question then is, what happens when they fall out of that criteria? Is there a continuing duty until there's a positive decision? Notwithstanding that they've ceased to be detained and they've left hospital. So that's the issue.
Nobody suggesting that when they leave hospital, there's a vacuum?
No.
I mean, that would be a disaster.
Yes, I think on both of our approaches.
There has to be a continuing duty.
Yes.
Sorry, duty that continues.
Yes.
And the question is, when does it end?
Have I understood you correctly? You accept that after the first period of detention, Worcestershire owed the duty?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
And your argument is, well, the detention that's relevant for our case is the second detention. And who owed the duty then? Swindon.
Precisely.
There was somebody owing a duty.
Yes.
Well, actually, potentially two people owing a duty.
Unless we, we adopt the approach which the judge concluded was right, that, that the first duty must come to an end when the second duty arises because there can't be two. And I understand Secretary of State agrees there can't be two juices. We must have a mechanism that gets us to one. And so the Secretary of State's approach, as I understand it, generates two. And I'm not clear how we would extinguish one of them. The judge's approach, I say, is the, the least artificial way of getting us to having just one duty that doesn't require us to, to, to ignore the clear terms of Section one-one-seven-one, which is that it applies every time there is a detention and discharge.
Yeah, okay.
Those were my submissions on.
Yeah.
Ground two. If I may then turn to ground one and the Proposition One.
Yes.
The judge's starting point was the Hertfordshire decision. And as I understand it, the Secretary of State's submission is, well, things have moved on because in Hertfordshire, or Justice Carmouth referred to there being a different formula deployed under the nineteen eighty-three Act to that employed under the nineteen forty-eight Act. But now there has been an evening and a common usage of the term ordinary residence, that that there's now a same formula and so Hertfordshire would be decided differently. And I say that to narrow a reading of, of Hertfordshire. And so the judge was right to take Hertfordshire as his starting point. If I can invite the court to look at Hertfordshire, which is tab nine of the authorities.
Yeah.
And if last, first if we look at page one six two. So as we see, well, back on page one six one, the judge is here dealing with the statutory framework. And bottom of one six two, paragraph seventeen, the judge says it's to be noted that section one one seven contains no deeming provision corresponding to that in section twenty four five of the nineteen forty eight act. And then if we look forward to paragraph forty five, which is the conclusion about, and we get to the concept of the formula. Lord Justice Carmouth says, paragraph forty five, however, the nineteen forty eight act precedent must have been well known to those involved in drafting the new bill, that's pre-bill. And then he says that speculation is not appropriate. And then midway through that paragraph, we have to proceed on the basis that Parliament deliberately chose a different formula and that by implication it accepted the possibility of responsibility changing over the period of detention, including the potential impact on continuity of care. I, I understand the Secretary of State's case to be, well, that the formula that was different was simply the use of the word residence versus ordinary residence. But that in my submission, the formula that Justice Carmouth was referring to must have included as well the absence of a deeming provision. So.
Yeah.
This, this is my submission essentially on Hertfordshire is that changing the term in one one seven to use ordinary residence hasn't rendered Hertfordshire irrelevant. And even if I'm wrong about what Lord Justice Carmouth was driving at when he referred to formula, even if I'm wrong about that not including reference to a deeming provision, we see in the following paragraph that the deeming provision was relevant because we've looked at this passage before, four lines up. He says that the interpretation or the declaration sort glosses over the status of the deeming provision.
Yeah.
It goes on to say the review is reinforced by contrast for the case of accommodation provided under section one one seven by a primary care trust or local health board, where Parliament has amended and applied a deeming provision. So I say the deeming provision was relevant to the conclusion in Hertfordshire. So simply changing, as my lord, Lord Justice Coulson observed, simply adding in the word ordinary can't have been such a momentous change as to suggest that the conclusion in Hertfordshire was wrong would now be decided differently.
You derive some assistance for that submission from the fact that the explanatory notes describe the amendments as minor?
Indeed, my lord, yes.
Although, as a member of the Civil Procedure Rules Committee for the best part of a decade, I have to say, I don't rely on explanatory notes as being accurate or in many cases grammatical. We have to note that that's what they say. This is minor, they say. Mr. Beale's eloquent submissions, at the very least, could be describing it as major. A major alignment.
A major alignment, although, and, and this, this may be perhaps a jury point, but this major change affected by the introduction of the word ordinary didn't dawn on the Secretary of State until some years after the amendment. The, the act came in in twenty fifteen and his guidance produced under the act said section one one seven works in the way that Worcestershire contends for. It was only in twenty twenty that the Secretary of State realised apparently that there'd been this momentous change despite his bill having introduced the change.
Yeah.
But that's a mind, that can't take me very far, but it's an observation.
Well, they're all, well, not all, but that's a jury point, but we, we understand. I mean, the, the other point here, of course, is the Secretary of State originally said it was swindon.
Yes. Yes, we were happy with that.
Yeah, well, we understand.
The, the other point on Hertfordshire is that we see paragraph fifty two. Lord Justice Carmouth dealt with the, the policy reasons for excluding a placement under the nineteen forty eight act, but said that the problem was finding a way to fit it within the legislative framework. And but then he addressed ex parte Watson, also known as Stennett, the, the House of Lords decision. And he says, nor in light of ex parte, can, can, can find in section one one seven of the nineteen eighty three act any express or implicit link to section twenty four of nineteen forty eight act in which one could find such an exclusion. And the court will see that Mr. Justice Lindon took that point about Watson establishing that the nineteen eighty three act and section one one seven is a, a specific duty owed to a very narrowly defined group of people. It's not the same, it's not, doesn't come the same territory as the nineteen forty eight act and therefore by implication, the twenty fourteen care act, which has replaced it. So even if.
I notice he says in paragraph fifty two, it may help to offset any temptation the court might otherwise have to stretch the ordinary rules of statutory construction to achieve what it perceives as a preferable result.
Well, my lord, yes.
So again, standing over the sidelines, one might say that he decided some years later in Cornwall to go the extra mile.
Yes, my lord, yes. And, and of course that.
Certainly that's how Lord Wilson perceived it.
Indeed. And Lord Justice Elias in the Court of Appeal in Cornwall, I think.
Yeah.
I have a big reason, but there you go.
Yeah, okay. Well, those are the jury points. Let's get back to the.
Back to the law. So even if I'm, even if Mr. Beale is right, that the, the change of the word ordinary radically alters how we should see Hertfordshire. And even if therefore it's not any longer binding authority as to the, the operation of one one seven. The, the conclusions the court reached about Watson and the, the difference between the two statutory schemes and the reliance that the court placed on the existence of a deeming provision are, I say, still relevant to how we approach today the question of what ordinary residence means under one one seven?
Yeah.
And essentially my submission is that, that taking my lord, Lord Coulson, Lord Justice Coulson's point, that, that ordinary residence means what Shaw says it means, the, the question is whether there's anything that compels us to give a different answer. And the Shaw answer to this lady's ordinary residence is swindon. I say that nothing compels a different answer, including Cornwall.
I'm sure you'll come to Cornwall, but what about the wider point at the heart of some of Mr. Beale's submissions, which is that it would be a jolly good thing if all these things were treated in the same way? And so funding for care generally operated on the same rules for establishing ordinary residence?
Can't possibly quarrel with that as a submission of, of, of the ideal. But the question of whether that's what we've got is entirely different. And in my submission, we do have something.
Yeah.
That differs. We have provisions in, well, section thirty nine of the Care Act says that if you are being accommodated under section one one seven, you're treated for the purposes of the Care Act. So that's the act under which other social care duties can be performed. You're treated as ordinarily resident in the area of the authority that owes you the one one seven duties. So that's a clear example of, of, of Parliament going to steps to ensure that there is a uniform approach. Simple submission is that Parliament didn't do that in respect of one one seven itself.
And the judge makes the point about thirty nine four.
My lord, yes.
In his judgment.
Yes.
So you say in thirty nine four of the Care Act, Parliament was spelling out a means of alignment?
Yes.
And you say that's missing here?
My lord, yes. If I may then turn to Cornwall. The Secretary of State, as I understand it, accepts that the answer reached in Cornwall turned on legal characteristics of the young man's residence. And but, as I understand it, Secretary of State says there are questions as to what those legal characteristics were. And Secretary of State says in his skeleton that there are two issues. Firstly, that deeming provisions didn't play a role in the conclusion that Lord Carmouth reached. And secondly, Secretary of State says that although there isn't a deeming provision for one one seven, it through a different means achieves exactly the same objective. And for that reason, Cornwall applies.
I don't think in fairness to Mr. Beale, he says a deeming provision did not play a role.
Yeah, quite.
It clearly did play a role on the face of paragraph fifty nine. What he says is it's not part of the ratio. It is an issue that arose on those facts.
Yes, my lady. Of course, I accept that apology.
No, no, I'm sorry. Your second point was that although.
The, the Secretary's second point is that the, although there isn't a deeming provision under one one seven, it achieves exactly the same outcome as a deeming provision would.
What, section one, one?
Yes.
One one seven three.
One one seven three, yeah.
And, and I say the Secretary of State's wrong about both of those. So if I could ask, if we could turn to Cornwall, which is tab ten of the, sorry, tab eleven of the authorities. And if we could look first at paragraph six.
Yeah.
So this is where Lord Carmouth's setting out the legislation. In paragraph six, he says, beginning of the paragraph, excuse me, although under the nineteen eighty nine act, primary duty lies with the authority in whose area the child happens to be ordinarily resident, sorry, in the area, in whose area the child happens to be, ordinary residence also has a part to play. And then I think we can jump down to the very last line, that paragraph by section one oh five six. We then have the deeming provision set out from the nineteen eighty nine act. So determining ordinary residence of a child for any purpose under this act, there should be disregard at any period in which he lives in a place whilst provided with accommodation by the authority. And then if we could turn through to page two one two, paragraph fifty nine. Paragraph fifty nine, Lord Carmouth says, in other words, it would be wrong to interpret section twenty four of the nineteen forty eight act, so as to regard PH as having been ordinarily resident in South Gloucestershire, by reason of a form of residence whose legal characteristics are to be found in the provision of the nineteen eighty nine act. And since one of those characteristics of that placement is that it did not affect his ordinary residence under the statutory scheme, it would create an unnecessary and avoidable mismatch. So that, I say, is plainly a reference to section one oh five and deeming provision.
Sorry, the, the section one oh five, the.
Of the children act of nineteen eighty nine.
So you're saying Lord Carmouth was saying, you can't make this child ordinary residence when he was a child, South Gloucestershire, because you have to disregard that under the children act?
Precisely, yes.
And as he was placed there by.
Wiltshire.
Wiltshire.
Yes. And, and so what I say is, is plain from that, although it's not in express terms, is that Lord Carmouth is, is having regard to the deeming provision, section one oh five.
And the mismatch is between?
Well, I understand the mismatch to be disregarding the accommodation for the purposes of the children act, but at the same time having regard to it for the purposes of the fourteen, nineteen forty eight act.
Yeah.
I think for, for my purposes, all I have to say is that, that in paragraph fifty nine, the, the, the analysis in paragraph fifty nine rested on the existence of the, at least the deeming provision in the children's. Children's. Question or the, the submission of Mr. Beale is, well, this paragraph fifty nine isn't relevant because the ratio of the case is in the preceding paragraph and indeed the, the final sentence of paragraph fifty eight. He was living for the time being in a place determined not by his own settled intention, but by the responsible local authorities serving for the purposes of fulfilling the statutory duty. Well, if that were the test, then all of the deeming provisions would be completely O T O's. If it was simply a question of where could you look back to the placing authority? And there would be no need for the, the, the detailed provisions that we have, such as section one oh five of the children act, or, or the provisions in the, the Care Act, which say that, that there's continuity in certain circumstances and therefore by implication not all. But, but also.
It's oddly worded for a ratio. Which is almost like a finding of fact.
Or I think as I put it before, to, to Mr. Justice Lindon, it's an observation of the position rather than a statement of legal principle.
Well, so where paragraph fifty nine begins, in other words, in reality, in other words, is making a completely different point in fifty nine.
Yes.
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 But he, but, well, yes, it, it is. And it's, I say, it's making the point that decided the case. And, and, and I I say I'm fortified in that if we look at sixty, which is.
Hang on a minute, hang on a minute. So, so you agree with my lord, it's, it is in fact making a completely different point? And you say, what you were, you went on to say, and it's that which?
Fifty nine is the passage which decided the legal issue. And, and I say I'm fortified in that by looking at paragraph sixty, which begins on this analysis.
Well, that's, goes back to my, potentially to my lord's point, which is actually, well, then sixty's back to fifty eight.
My lady, yes, I think.
But because fifty eight and sixty are, are part of a piece. The thinking's the same. You know, so fifty eight, we've got the, it wasn't his settled intention, it was his placement there. And that's picked up again in sixty. It was where, Wiltshire was where he was placed, under an arrangement, et cetera, et cetera. And fifty nine pops up in the middle. And it may be fifty nine, you know, as you say, is the, you say that's the legal determination.
Well, my lady, yes, I, I, I see that. Although in, in paragraph sixty, we have in the, in the middle of the paragraph, Carmouth says for fiscal and administrative purposes, his ordinary residence continued to be in their area. This is Wiltshire, regardless of where they determined that he should live. Now, I, I say that's again a reference to the deeming provision because it's, it's the deeming provision, section one oh five, which achieved that outcome.
But, but that's exactly what section one one seven three does as well, which is a real, the second part of your submission you're coming on to.
Yes, my lady.
That, that says, ignore where, well, ignore where they're living at the time. You go back to where they were living immediately before they were detained.
My lady, yes, I, I accept that. But yes, that, that is my, second part of my submission as to whether section one one seven three in fact does do that.
Okay, well, your, your first submission is that that last. that that last sentence in 58 isn't the ratio. And you made your submissions about that, you made your submissions about 59, you made your submissions about the sentence for fiscal and administrative purposes. I think that's the only time that phrase appears in the judgment, is that right? I couldn't find it anywhere else.
It comes from Schar, where in Schar there was suggestion that you might, you might have the records.
No, no, I don't have, I can, I'll have a look, no, 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 I was just blushing to myself.
Okay, so you think it might come from Schar. It's just that if it's not used somewhere else, it's a slightly odd place suddenly to find that concept. But don't worry, I'm sure that our further reading will turn it up.
I've seen it already.
You have seen it, fine. My lady's seen it, so she must be right.
It is 57, I'm exhausted, prompted me, but, so, yes.
Oh, it's...
Just about.
It is Schar, you were quite right. Thank you. Yes, so, so he identifies that its context is critical, the purpose of the provision is purely administrative and fiscal. And then that's the phrase that comes in effectively in 60.
Yes.
Which, as I say, my first reading of it was that that was the guts of the decision. But anyway, so I completely understand why you say what you say about the last sentence of 58. So those are your submissions anyway, on your first point. Is there anything else on your first point?
My lord, no other than to say that I support what Mr. Justice Lyndon said about needing to read those paragraphs together. That's what he says, the paragraph 82 of his judgment, and I say that that was the right approach.
Yes.
Just to take it before we leave, not a cheap point, I hope, but just to invite you, give you the opportunity to comment on the summary of what the ratio is at page 180 in the headnote. Insofar as that is of any relevance whatsoever.
Where are we looking?
Subparaphr 2, allowing the appeals, letter E, page 1, internal 138, page 180. Policy of the Act is to leave the ordinary residence unaffected so as to prevent the authority from exporting its responsibilities elsewhere. Section 24, purely administrative and fiscal, allocating responsibility. Doesn't mention paragraph 59. I'm just, as I say, it may not matter at all, suspect it doesn't. I just want to give you the opportunity to...
Well, it doesn't mention 59.
It doesn't, doesn't.
57 to 61.
Yes, but if you look at the, sorry, the body of it.
Yeah.
I mean, you would, would you accept this as a fair summary of the ratio?
My lady, forgive me, if I may just have a closer look. Well, my lady, Cornwall's a very difficult case.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but the, if, assuming the headnote gets anywhere near the ratio of the case, the policy of the 1989 and 1948 Acts was to leave the ordinary residence of the person unaffected by the location of the placement, et cetera, which is precisely what section 105 of the Children Act, which is what's referred to in 59, as you say, and perfectly reasonable interpretation, that's how you achieve that.
Yes, precisely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Turn then to the Secretary of State's second point, which is as to the operation of section 117 being akin to a deeming provision. I say, again, the Secretary of State's mistaken. What, how it's put in my learned friend's skeleton argument is in fact that section 117.3 asks us to consider where the person was ordinarily resident immediately before detention. And then says that wherever their place doesn't affect their ordinary residence. And I say that's wrong. All section 117.3 asks, the only way in which it concerns itself with ordinary residence at all is by asking where the person is ordinarily resident immediately prior to detention.
So what was the second bit you added that you say is their submission that you're going to agree with?
As it's put in this goes an argument, that a placement under 117 doesn't affect ordinary residence. And I say that isn't what 117.3 says, and nor does it need to. Section 117 simply asks a question, expressly asks a question, where was the person, was the person ordinarily resident somewhere immediately or way or immediately before detention? If the answer to that is yes, the question is where were they ordinarily resident immediately before detention? And it is, I say, relevant to note that this is a different question to that which arose in the Cornwall case. And Cornwall, the duty under the National Assistance Act, fell on the authority where the person is ordinarily resident. So if you want to achieve the objective of stopping local authorities exporting the responsibility, you have to create a fiction about the person's ordinary residence. Unless you can continue, deem their ordinary residence to be in the place of the originating authority, they would acquire ordinary residence where they're living, and so the duty would then fall on the authority for that area. So it's necessary, given the way the duty is framed under the 1948 Act, to create a fiction about the person's ongoing ordinary residence. Section 117 doesn't go into that territory at all. It asks a specific question of where they were ordinarily resident at a past point in time. And indeed arguably, given that section 117 asks us, at the point when the duty arises, where was this person ordinarily resident immediately prior to detention? Arguably, section 117 envisages that they might not any longer today be ordinarily resident in the place we're talking about. We don't care whether ordinarily resident today. The section only asks us to think about where they were ordinarily resident at some past point.
Well, the Act had to identify, because it's created a duty on a local authority. And somebody can't be resident if they're being detained on sec 3 or 37 or 45A, whatever. So the Act has to say something to identify the relevant local authority.
My lord, yes.
And this is what it says.
Yes. It fixes the point of inquiry at the date before detention. And that's all it asks, and it's the only concern it has with the concept of ordinary residence at that snapshot moment. The Secretary of State is right to say that the 117 duty can't be exported. And that's been understood for decades. And indeed, that's what's happened here. Worcester had the duty, but they knew full well that if they performed the duty by placing in Swindon, that they would continue to owe the duty to JG. But none of that turned on JG continuing to be ordinarily resident in Worcestershire. That was irrelevant, and certainly on the current terms of section 117.3, that the future ordinary residence of the person is irrelevant. We only have to consider their ordinary residence at the point in which they were detained. So the question then arises, I say, well, what is the necessity to create an artificial construct about JG's ordinary residence? There is none. You can achieve the policy objective, as has been done in this case, of securing the continued performance of the duty out of area without needing to construct a fiction about the person's ordinary residence. Sorry, the policy objective, the policy objective of preventing the export of the duty.
Because...
Because the 117.3 simply asks where were they ordinarily resident prior to detention? That fixes the duty. And no matter how the duty is performed or where it's performed, there is no way of avoiding the duty because it was fixed by reference to that fact.
Yeah, so that explains why the duty first time round was on Worcestershire when JG was first detained.
Yes.
And you say you asked the same question again at the time of the second detention.
Yes.
And then the answer to ordinary resident is different.
Indeed, because, as I understand the Secretary of State's point is, if we don't create this fiction and regard the person as being ordinarily resident in the area of the body that's discharging the duty, that body will divest itself of the duty. But that's not right, as happened in the Worcestershire case. For as long as the 117 duty continued to this lady, Worcester performed it because the duty crystallized at the point by reference to her residence prior to detention. You don't have to maintain a fiction of treating this lady as being ordinarily resident in Worcester for Worcester to carry on having the duty to pay for the care home in Swindon.
Well, I think, to be fair to Mr. Buda, I think he accepts that. Because when we were discussing this, I'm just reminding myself, he said, second time round, on the words, yes, it'd be Swindon, but, he said, the position is now changed because of Cornwall. So we come back to Cornwall. So I'm not necessarily sure that the premise that through different means the same objective is achieved actually is right. It's really back to what Cornwall decided, which was your first point.
Well, my lord, yes. I suppose the point I would make is that what it seems the Secretary of State's argument is about is it's not about avoiding the exporting of the duty because the duty continues without affections to ordinary residence. The Secretary of State's argument is about a different subsequent duty and how you resolve that question. So this isn't a necessary... Treating somebody as ordinarily resident in the area of the placing 117 bodies isn't necessary to prevent them divesting themselves of the duty. It is necessary to achieve the Secretary of State's objective of if there is a second duty...
Yeah, it's effectively, in other areas of law, called relation back.
Yes.
It's effectively, the Secretary of State had two ways of getting back to the original duty owner.
Yes.
Worcestershire. And the second way didn't work, but was, to be fair put, as an alternative. So this is the way in which they seek to put it. Yeah.
My lord, I say that Cornwall doesn't compel, for the reasons I've said, Cornwall doesn't compel a conclusion that that's what ordinary residence means. And I say it's not, there aren't adverse policy consequences from our interpretation. Because our interpretation still means that the responsible bodies retain the duty for as long as it lasts.
Yeah.
What I object to is an artificial fiction that says that this person's ordinary residence isn't what the Schar test would have it be. It's not necessary to create that fiction, I say, to achieve that objective that the duty rests on the original authority for as long as the duty endures. I don't think I need to go back to the Care Act amendments. I think the only point I need to make is the one the judge made, which has been made in the course of discussions that the Law Commission described them as, or the expansion notes described them as minor. And I maintain that that is what, what indeed they were, just introducing the word ordinary. Didn't signal any intention to introduce a deeming provision of the sort which effectively the Secretary of State is contending for.
And you've already made the point about 39.4.
Yes. And of course, I rely on what Lord Wilson said about the majority view in Cornwall at rendering section 105 redundant.
Sorry, just, just help me with that. I haven't, to be honest, I haven't even glanced at Lord Wilson's judgment, so, which is the particular bit?
Paragraph 71.
71, thank you. I see that the complication of somebody's habitual residence doesn't apply. Be grateful for small mercies.
Yes.
Okay?
Unless I can assist the court further.
Not me, I think.
No, it's going to be very...
No, thank you very much, Mr. Parker, that was very focused and economical. Thank you, not Mr. Buda, you weren't.
No, no.
Saying that...
I didn't take offence off that.
That was very good, yes.
Well, I must learn in this job not to have too thin a skin.
There can't be that much in reply because you envisaged most of this
Yes, I did.
and made submissions about it. So not that, of course, I'm seeking...
No, I'm hoping to be efficient certainly in reply, so, let's see, here we go. Shall I deal with it, I'll take it in the order that Mr. Parker took it, so I'll take ground two first. It's sensible at this stage. A couple of quick points and then one slightly longer point. So just picking up on some of the observations in the course of argument. Let's just locate ourselves, this is back to the point about whether the duty is terminated by the fact of the second discharge. My Lord, Lord Justice Coulson made the observation to my learned friend that if he's right about this, that does appear to involve some threat to continuity of care, especially in the context of my Lord William Davis's point that you've got people kind of coming in and out of detention. Now, in fairness, he didn't deny that, but he sought to push back a little bit. He said, well, yes, but sometimes people will be readmitted only on a voluntary basis and so forth. That's true, but you will plainly get, and you do get, and I don't want to give evidence, but I've seen and sure may have seen, there will be cases where people will be redetained and then released, and redetained and released under section three. And it is obviously highly undesirable, can't be, can't be itself be the answer to the case, it's obviously highly undesirable, but the body responsible for providing their care will shift on each of those occasions. And that is the consequence of his argument. The second point on this, again picking up on a point made by my lady now, or building on it, is that, and this is going to the point that my learned friend deals with the sort of slightly undesirable consequences of his argument by saying, well, it's all right because the logic, because the code, and I know he's going to give you the code, you can see exactly what it says, but the code envisages that the putative new authority, the duty won't yet have fallen upon them, but nevertheless they know they'll be in the frame, that that putative new authority should start thinking about what to do before the person is actually discharged and before the duty arises. Now, first of all, that's not, that's a bit problematic, I mean, I think the code does say something along those lines. It's a bit problematic, as is shown by cases like this, because.
So you think the code says something along those lines?
Certainly, I'm not denying it says something along those lines, that's right, yeah. And I'll leave it to my lady, if she can supply it, we will see exactly what it says. But first of all, a limitation of that is that, of course, as this case shows, you will often have disputes about who the responsible authority is. So if you always have to go to the new authority and there's a dispute about who the new authority is, that can create a problem. But more importantly, this is a point my lady made. Bear in mind where we've got to in the argument now. On the facts of this case and in many other cases, the pre-existing duty will continue to subsist. So it is, in my respectful submission, obviously bizarre, if my learned friend is right, to have a situation where the pre-existing duty subsists. They've got, they actually owe the person a duty under section 117, though they're detained, but the new authority is nevertheless not yet, not yet actually in the frame, they don't owe a duty, and yet they're in a position where they too have to engage in care planning, and so you have duplication. That's a pretty odd situation. If that's a consequence of his argument, as I think he acknowledges that it is, that's a very odd position to end up with, it must be a pointer in his argument. Third point, my learned friend places reliance on what the judge said under the, in the context of proposition, what was then proposition two. So this was my argument, which I've not renewed to you, that you inter, effectively my argument was, I can say now, I can see it was a bit of a stretch perhaps, you effectively insert words into section 117.3a, you add the word first. So instead of immediately before being trained, it's effectively, if it's said immediately before being first detained.
It was a more naked relation back.
It was, it was, it was, and you can understand why we haven't, we always put it as a second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can understand why we haven't. I haven't appealed to the judge's ruling on that, so it's not before you. But there are two points to make about it. First of all, it goes back to the point my Lord, Lord Justice Coulson made, that of course strictly, this point about proposition three logically arises first. In other words, if we're right on proposition three, then you don't get into the question of, you know, who the responsible authority is for the new duty because the new duty never arises. And so logically, what the judge says about the insertion of those words doesn't really bear on the prior question of under proposition three. Secondly, I don't accept that I'm bound with everything the judge says under the, under the heading of proposition two in his judgment. I haven't appealed the ruling, the ruling was you can't add in the word first into the statute. But he was wrong for the reasons I have given to conclude that there's something in the statute which necessarily implies that the duty arises, must arise and therefore must, as I put it earlier, crowd out the earlier duty. Then that brings me to my last point in reply on this point, which I freely accept is slightly building on points made in the course of arguments with my learned friend. But can I just, in the course of the court, go back to section 117? It's page 23 of the authorities in tab two. Because the heart of my learned friend's argument is a point about the language of subsection one. And he says, well, that mandates that every time a person is discharged, they are owed a new duty. Effectively, that's, I hope I've probably oversimplified, but that's the thrust of his argument. Well, as I think my lady observed, I mean, it doesn't actually say that. In fact, all that it does is, is it tells you that the section applies to the person. It doesn't do anything more, the duty, the identification of the duty ower and all the rest of it, that comes in later subsections. All that subsection one does is tell you that this section applies.
To these people.
To that, to that person, to that person, exactly. Now, consider that, consider JG as at the date of her release in November 2015, I think.
Discharge.
I'm so sorry, thank you, you're quite right, you know, you're quite right to tell me off, you're quite right to pull me up. Discharge, so consider her situation as at the moment of discharge in that month. On the basis of the judge's findings, which have not been appealed, she is someone to whom the duty has continued to be owed, the duty has continued to subsist, at least up until the point of discharge. So she is therefore.
So duty owed by Worcester.
By Worcestershire, as it happens, but for my, for the person's point I want to make, it doesn't actually matter. So she is someone to whom the duty is owed. In other words, she is already a person, as at whatever it was, the 15th of November. She is already a person to whom the section applies. That's all that section one is, and all that section one is doing is telling you that she's a person to whom the section applies. Well, in her case, we already know that. And we already know that the section applies to her, that she's owed a duty under subsection two, and by reference to the exercise under subsection three, which has already been carried out in her case, because it arose at an earlier stage, that the duty ower, if I can put it like that, is Worcestershire. And so there's nothing.
Just, I'm very sorry, I didn't make a note of what point in time you were fixing this at.
So the moment of discharge from the second detention, the date of which is, let me just put myself out of my own misery, I'll just remind myself of the exact date, she's discharged on the 12th of November 2015.
The moment of discharge, second detention.
Yes.
I.e. whatever the date is, November.
Yeah, 12th of November 2015.
2015.
Yeah. So, so.
On the judge's finding.
Yeah, well, she's owed, she's been discharged from an early detention, so she's owed a duty under section 117. That duty subsisted at least until the point of the new detention. On the judge's finding, and on my argument, first part of proposition three, it continued to subsist thereafter, continued to subsist during the period of second detention.
Yeah.
So what is the effect on her of subsection one at the moment of discharge? Would it tell you that the section applies to her? But that's not adding, in her case, that's not adding to anything that we don't already know. Because we already know that the section applies to her, that she's owed a duty. And so there's nothing in the language of subsection one which mandates, I mean, impossible, to the taking away of the duty by Worcestershire just because she's then meets the conditions. She's already met the conditions and the section already applies. And that's, if that's the right way to look at it, that actually does explain, I mean, I don't say it's crystal clear, but that does explain why the first duty takes precedent. Because it already exists, the section already applies, and we've already identified the duty ower by reference to the later subsection.
So how long you've spent trying to persuade Mr. Justice Lyndon to add the word first.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I was, you know, I was wrong on that point, I mean.
Yes, I see.
But on this, as my lord says.
I didn't spend very long.
That was all academic, if you were right on this point.
Yes, yes, yes.
Because, because on this point, you say you get to your relation back.
Exactly.
Because, I mean, it's, this depends on a negative which the previous, which the first two didn't.
Yeah.
Because this depends on the finding of fact about there being no decision.
Sure, sure.
But subject to that, it's relation back.
Yes. Correct, yeah. So that's, that's ground two, that's what I wanted to say on ground two. Come back to ground one. Hope that was efficient.
Yeah.
Ground one. My learned friend, broadly speaking, dealt with Hertfordshire, Cornwall briefly, something about section 117, I'll take it in that order. I think the point I really want to make about Hertfordshire is this. There's been some discussion, my lord has picked up on the point, that the amendments to section 117 at one point described as minor, they're not major and so forth. I mean, I don't really dispute that. And it's important to say that the thrust of what the Secretary of State decided is not that the amendments to section 117 affect in themselves affected some major radical change which enabled the outcome of this case. Plainly, the radical move was Cornwall. Cornwall was, I think, on any view, right or wrong, whatever you think of it, it was a radical judgment. It did change the law as it was understood by most of us.
Yeah, well, that's consistent, that's entirely consistent with your answer to my questions this morning, where twice you accepted that on, if you stop the approach there, the answer was Swindon in this case, but you said Cornwall changes it.
Yeah, absolutely, Cornwall is the radical move here, that's right. So in relation to Hertfordshire, what is, and I'm not relying on Hertfordshire, I'm just saying it's not an obstacle to the reasoning in relation to, yeah. So all that Hertfordshire decides is that the court should refuse a rather odd declaration that resident means ordinarily resident. And the court refused it for all sorts of reasons, one imagines. But one of them was, I mean, my learned friend is perfectly right to say, one of the, one of the things, one of the complications, as it were, was, well, one of these sections has got a deeming provision and one of them hasn't. But the critical conclusion was Parliament has deliberately used, chosen a different formula, resident, not ordinarily resident, and we can't rewrite the statute. But I mean, I don't know whether, I mean, would the court now, I'm not seeking a declaration along the lines of Hertfordshire. Would the court now give a declaration along the lines of Hertfordshire in the change of, I don't know? Quite likely not, for all sorts of reasons. Might be quite a dangerous thing to do in those general terms. It'd be much better to consider it as we, as courts normally do, on a sort of case by case basis.
The essence of your submission is very simple. You say you're not relying on Hertfordshire. You just say it's not an insurmountable obstacle to us.
Yes.
If otherwise we were tempted by your submissions. And, and you pray in aid, although relatively quietly, the fact that in Hertfordshire, they made the distinction between resident and ordinarily resident being one of the reasons why they didn't grant a declaration.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, saying so this, my lord, I don't just say it's not an insurmountable, I say it's not an obstacle, I mean, it's just, in a sense, it's not relevant now. What you have to.
Although, I think that overstates it, it cannot be not relevant because it's a decision of this court on this section, albeit unamended.
I don't mean it's irrelevant, I don't mean we shouldn't be looking at it, obviously not, but it's not, it's not a material obstacle. The matter that, the issue that falls for your decision is what ordinarily resident, is how the ordinary residence test in the new section 117 works and whether the logic of Cornwall, a case which hadn't been decided at the time of Hertfordshire, applies to it. Hertfordshire, which was concerned with an earlier version of section 117, just doesn't really have anything to say on that question. That's the point.
Yeah, and that, that also explains why that's your answer to Mr. Parkhill's jury point, although well made, I mean, no doubt, that, well, the Secretary of State himself didn't think.
No, that's right.
This was a radical, that ordinarily resident meant what you now say it does, until Cornwall.
No, that's right, and equally, after Cornwall was decided, I mean, the Secretary of State took a long time to work out what I want to make of Cornwall, there's no doubt about it. And that's why, that's why we're here in 2021, not in 2017, I suppose. You know, Cornwall's, as we've all seen, is quite a difficult judgment. The jury point, I mean, I understand, I understand why the jury point is tempting. Yeah. So that's what I'm saying about Hertfordshire. Cornwall, perhaps we can, I didn't turn up Hertfordshire, but I will ask you just to turn up Cornwall. It's tab 11, as you're sure you know by now.
While doing that, can I just flag up two questions.
Yes, of course, please.
So while we're picking it up. I'd like to hear from you on the submission, amongst others, that if you're right, the deeming provisions are otios.
Well, that's the very first point I'm going to deal with.
And then the submissions out of Cornwall about why section 117 is not a deeming provision. That's not a Cornwall point, that's a separate point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, okay, let me just make a note. The first one, I'm just, is what I'm going to come to first, actually. And then, I'll come to what I think, I can always come back to that with my lady. Okay, so on deeming provisions, the simplest way to deal with, sorry, on the otios point, the simplest way to deal with that is to see what Lord Wilson said about it. And it's in paragraph 71, which you looked at briefly with my learned friend. And the point which Lord Wilson makes in paragraph 71, so 174 of the report, 216 of the bundle, if you have it, is in effect, he says, well, look, the effect of the majority's judgment is to render the deeming provisions otios. Not to contradict them, doesn't, it just makes them unnecessary, it's otios in the sense of unnecessary. You didn't need to have them. And Lord Wilson is right about that. He's definitely right about that. And he's right, whatever interpretation you put on paragraphs 58 to 60, which I'll come back to in a minute.
And you said the Supreme Court battled on nevertheless.
And the Supreme Court decided, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Sorry.
I don't pretend to know, I don't pretend to know the way these things are done behind the scenes, as it were, but whether Lord Wilson made that point, or whether it was made in the course of argument, or whether it was made in the course of trial, obviously I don't know. But I'm presuming the Supreme.
We have no idea.
No, no, well, you don't know either, but you've probably got a slightly better idea of how these things work than I do. But I mean, there's no doubt that point is out there, it's in the judgment. Lord Wilson made the point, and as I say, he's correct. But it can't, in a sense, it can't tell us anything that's useful because it's correct whichever interpretation you adopt of the judgment.
I see, so whether you take the narrow, the higher road or the lower.
The Supreme, yeah, the Supreme Court were content, one must assume, were alive to and content with the fact that they're, as I said, the majority, with the fact that their reading made these provisions otios. Now, there are, there is obviously principles of statutory construction. You may want to avoid an interpretation which makes other provisions otios, but it's not, in fairness, it's not an absolute rule. There are times when that scene is less problematic and sometimes provisions are added for the avoidance of doubt, as it were. And effectively, I mean, in a sense, it's implicit in what Lord Carmouth himself says in the passages that we've looked at. Because effectively, what Lord Carmouth is doing, I'll come back to the detail of it in a minute, but just to make the general point, what Lord Carmouth is doing is he's recognizing there are these deeming provisions. He's recognizing they leave gaps, in this case, they leave a gap because they only apply to their own statute. And he's fulfilling what he sees as a perceived gap. And he's using the deeming provisions as a clue, as it were, to Parliament's wider intentions. So that's, that's how I answer the point about otios. And therefore, A, it doesn't tell you anything about how you read Cornwall. And B, it shouldn't trouble you very greatly if there's said to be some other provision that is made otios. I think it's said that section 39.4 of the CARE Act is made otios. Because you should adopt the same approach at the Supreme Court in this statutory context. So that's the first point about Cornwall. The second point, just to come back to this ques, I don't want to get too bogged down in this because we could be there forever, I suppose. But on this question of, well, where do you find the ratio, is it in paragraph 58, 59, 60? I suggested to you that it was in paragraph 58 effectively, and I gave you my ratio. And certainly, as far as I'm concerned, it's just as, it's just as correct to say it's found in paragraph 60. And it's the same ratio, because my Lord, Lord Justice Coulson said, well, I think at one point you thought the guts of it, as it were, were in the middle of paragraph 60, the reference to fiscal and administrative purposes and so forth. Well, that's the same ratio, the same point. Ordinary residents continue to be in the air, their area, i.e. the placing authority's area, regardless of where they, they determine that he should live. That's the same point, as I say. The placement doesn't affect ordinary residence. So, you know, I'm slight, I'm, I'm probably, I'm a bit ambivalent, I mean, I've, do I make more of paragraph 58 or paragraph 60, I've, I've, I'm denied, I suppose, in the course of arguing this case now over another year. But, um, it's the same point in, in those two paragraphs. Next point, um, is just, I do just want to sort of invite you to step back slightly now. I mean, the, the two alternative constructions of these, interpretations of these paragraphs, and I'm now focused on the judgment as a whole, but especially paragraphs 58 to 60 there, are that it's, so I say it's the placement doesn't affect ordinary residence, the placement pursuant to statutory functions doesn't affect ordinary residence. My learned friend says, um, placement pursuant to statutory powers doesn't affect ordinary residence. Well, I, I don't want to formulate his ratio exactly, but because of the deeming provisions or where the deeming provisions apply, something like that. Now, first of all, I say for the reasons I've developed, a better reading of the paragraphs as a whole is my reading, and I've given you my submissions on that. But secondly, in my submission, the first interpretation is, in my submission, a more principled approach. Because if my learned friend is right, that it's only about the deeming, it's only, it's all about the deeming provisions, then in effect, what the Supreme Court has done is extend the deeming provisions. And it's extended the deeming provisions in a way which is expressly contrary to their language. Because both of the deeming provisions that were in play in this case, and indeed the deeming provision in the Care Act as well, for that matter.
All limited to their own act.
Sorry?
They're all limited to their own.
They're limited to their own act, exactly. And they're expressly limited to their own act. So it's a, and it would be a very unprincipled thing, and I mean, I know Lord Wilson says it's an unprincipled judgment, but we must assume not. It's a, it's a very unprincipled thing for the Supreme Court to do, to say, okay, I've seen these deeming provisions, I've seen that they're limited to their own act, I'm just going to disregard the bit of them that says they're limited to their own act.
Well, no, they go further because they make the otios.
And, and make the, well, and make the otios.
They, essentially, you, you, on this basis, they're saying, well, we don't care about the deeming provisions.
No.
Whether they're, whether they're limited to their own acts or
Yeah.
Uh, uh, only referable to parts of Northern Ireland.
Yes.
Makes no difference.
Doesn't matter, we just, we just say they've
Just put a red line through it.
We, we put a, well, we put a red line through that bit of it, and then, yeah, we, we extend them. That's not a very, that's not a, it's not a very attractive way of reading the Supreme Court's judgment. Whereas the submission that I'm making to you is different from that. Because what I'm saying to you is that the Supreme Court identified something inherent in the concept of ordinary residence such that it is not affected by an out of area placement. Because control, this, the decision making remains in the area of the placing authority. That's, that's what paragraph 60, for example, is saying, that's, that's a sentence about fiscal and administrative purposes.
So an ordinary residence such that the Supreme Court identifies something inherent in the concept
Of ordinary residence.
Such that.
Such that it is not affected by an out, by placements by an authority, by a public authority, acting pursuant to its statutory duty.
Well, you said originally, you said not affected by an out of area.
I know, but I, I, I did, and I, I think those, that, like, those extra words are just otios. It, so I think we can just put a line through those words. Um, it comes to the same thing. In a sense, they're obviously not going to be affected by in borough placements, because you stay in the same borough anyway, but.
Yeah. So that comes back to the once and for all statutory duty, the relation back.
Yes. So, so what, what, what I say the Supreme Court has done is it's thought about the concept of ordinary residence. And it is decided that when Parliament uses that phrase in, in, in this kind of statutory context, it's, the, the, the concept itself is such that it's not affected, albeit it means, the basic meaning is where you live, is not affected by placements where you, you, the person who's ordinarily resident is being determined, is determined by someone, by someone else, by a placing authority. And that's a much more principled way of understanding the judgment, in my submission.
So, I mean, in the, literally following the facts of Cornwall, um, here's a, who's looked after person.
Yeah.
Um, who at the age of four
Yeah.
Leaves where, I can't remember if it's a he or she now.
It's a he.
A he, uh, he leaves where he's been living.
Yes.
As I understand it, never returns, or at least not for once.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah.
South Gloucestershire, Somerset, Cornwall briefly.
I don't think he ever goes to, I mean, that's one of the weird things about the case, he never goes to Cornwall. Because the idea that he's ordinarily resident, I'm not sure he's ever been there, he might have been there for a while.
Parents visit him from Cornwall.
Yeah, I think he might have visited his parents once or twice.
Yes, anyway, but, um, from the age of four, um, he never darkens the door of Wilshire.
No.
Um.
But when one reads paragraph 60, that's exactly the Supreme Court
Yeah, because they're saying, it doesn't matter, at the critical time, Wilshire
To retain indefinite responsibility for a person who left the area
Yeah.
many years ago.
Well, he says that might seem harsh, but actually, I mean, it's, it's a swing and roundabout point, I mean, these things are even out in the end, because
Well, if they did, people wouldn't spend a lot of time in the Court of Field arguing about whose responsibility.
Oh, I think they would, because they'd still want the swings to go more their way.
Yeah, so that, that
But on, on this, um, I mean, Lord, Lord Carnworth was really saying, um, this, what Lord Scarman spoke of about ordinary residence simply doesn't apply.
Well, it doesn't apply in this particular, doesn't apply in the context of placements.
That's
Yeah, yeah.
Let me finish my sentence.
I'm so sorry.
I would have said.
Yes, yes, sorry, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they're saying.
So it doesn't apply, um, obviously for people who are being placed after they've been released from psychiatric hospitals. They're very likely to be.
Well, yeah, but I don't think that's a problem, I mean, because you'd never acquire, you'd never acquire ordinary residence in a psychiatric hospital.
No, no, I mean, when they've been released, this, this person spent a better part of a year in Swindon, wherever.
Yeah.
Never acquired an ordinary residence in Swindon.
No, she didn't, no.
No.
That's right.
Well, in your case, couldn't.
Yeah.
Because you come back to the, 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 what you say is the effect of Cornwall.
Yeah, for, I should say, for the purposes of community care, broadly community care statutes, allocating this kind of responsibility.
Yeah.
If her ordinary residence had to be determined for a, a tax statute, for the sake of argument, for some reason.
Yeah.
Then I don't necessarily say this would apply, I mean, you don't need to decide that, but I would imagine there would be quite a strong argument it wouldn't apply, because that's just a wholly unrelated question, and why should she be landed with ordinary residence?
No, but it's the same words.
Yeah, it is the same words.
It's all about whether you're being placed under some kind of care.
It's in the context of allocating responsibility for fiscal and administrative purposes.
If you're right about your, um, analysis of the ratio.
Yeah.
Um, if underlined. Uh.
Yes.
Do you say we are bound by, we're bound by it?
Well, you're plainly bound by it.
By the, by the ratio, and you would say whether, uh, and that effectively, although this was dealing with different legislation.
Yeah.
Uh, we would effectively be bound to apply it.
Yeah.
Not technically bound in the limited sense that it's dealing with different legislation.
I mean, you're, you're bound
Say be bound to follow, sorry.
Yes.
Bound to follow the ratio.
Yes, my lady, you're bound by Cornwall for what it decides. The difficult question is what it decides. Does that answer the question?
It does, thank you.
Then the last point on this, and again, sort of slightly pulling back again a stage further perhaps, is, is just to invite you to think about what's going on in Cornwall, what, what's driving the court's decision. Now, there's no doubt, and it's plain from Lord Carnworth's judgment, it's plain from, for example, 54 to 55, paragraph 54. That this is driven in part by the Supreme Court's view of policy. Now, Lord Wilson would say that's illegitimate, but the majority plain, he thought it wasn't illegitimate, and that was a legitimate interpretive technique, and we must, we must assume that's right. Now, what is the policy that the Supreme Court detects? I would say that the critical policy is what all of those statutes are seeking to achieve in their different ways, which is that out of borough placements shouldn't change, shouldn't alter the identity of the responsible authority. My learned friend, I don't know if he does, but might say, no, the critical policy is narrower than that. The critical policy is that out of borough placements don't affect ordinary residence. But, and so that's why he focuses on the fact that it's a deeming provision, and it deems you to, your ordinary residence to remain in the same place. But in my submission, it's obvious that although those deeming provisions do say, well, you retain ordinary residence in the area of the, effectively you treat the person's ordinary residence as if it were something else, or you disregard the placement out of borough, whatever it is. It doesn't preserve ordinary residence for the sake of preserving ordinary residence. It does it for the sake, the policy aim is to preserve, preserve the identity of the
So, I mean, the only reason why we're looking into ordinary residence is to identify, so you can't silo out the intermediate question.
Yeah.
You have to, it's all about
Exactly.
Identity.
It's all about the identity of the person who has the duty, and ordinary residence is just the tech, the legislative technique. Now, if that's right, you then come back to think about paragraphs 58 to 60. Why should it matter? My learned friend says, well, it's a narrow approach, it's only deeming provision cases. But, but given how driven by, plainly driven by policy that all of this is, why should one limit those narrow cases? Surely one should apply this logic to any case where the broad policy of preserving the identity of the person who owns the duty is discernible. And that is just as discernible in the Mental Health Act as it now is, as it is in the, um, as it is in the other statutory regimes.
That's a very bold submission. Isn't it?
Well, it's a very radical case.
Well.
I was, I'm always troubled when judges describe my submissions.
Well, I, 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 I mean, I appreciate, like, yes, minister, it's very courageous. I, I understand that the, the implicit, um, I, I, I say that entirely neutrally.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
It is a very bold submission to say you should apply this policy, I think unidentified in the judgment.
Um. I would say you get it from paragraphs 54 and 55, it's plain that the
I suppose, yeah, 55, the policy discernible in gaps that they were talking about.
It's in order to
Ordinary residence should not be affected by the location of placement.
Yeah, and it shouldn't be affected because you want to preserve continuity.
But, but making it clear it's those statutes. Why I say your submission is bold is you're saying that this must apply to all statutes that use the expression ordinary resident in the Care uh, social services provision context.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm not sure there are many more of them than the ones we've got.
Well, can I ask you that?
You've seen most of them.
That could be an important point.
Yeah.
Um, what, what are, is there any other relevant legislation that we need to consider that, that that sort of statement
Off the top of my head, um, those, it's the sort of question that those behind me might be able to answer
I'd like to know.
Better than me, we can, I can take some instructions on.
So we've got the, we've got the Children Act, we've got the, um, Care Act, we've got the Mental Health Act.
I mean, I certainly don't rule out that there's the odd other notable power, whether it's in the existing legislation or, or otherwise, but, or someone
If what matters is fiscal.
Yes.
Then why don't the tax statutes matter?
Oh, well, the tax statutes are doing something quite different.
Well, they may be, but, but the policy is fiscal and administrative.
Because the policy, yeah, but the, yeah, but it's fiscal in the sense of, it's fiscally in a very specific set, I mean, of course fiscal and is, is tax, but it's fiscal and administrative in a, in a very specific sense.
Less authoritative budgeting.
Yes, exactly. So, um, I mean, I think the tax, I mean, you see, it's where ordinary residence gets a bit complicated, because the tax statutes are actually not generally concerned with ordinary residence in this or that borough, they're concerned with ordinary residence in the UK or not.
Yeah.
And for a start. But of course, the, the, the policy aims of kind of preserving continuity of responsibility and the like, they're not going to have any application.
No, I see that.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm not ruling out that the argument could be made in tax cases, I mean, that's a case for another day, but I have to say, I would have thought there would be very strong counter arguments.
Yes.
And indeed, I question whether the issue would arise in the same way. Can I just deal with those?
So just to, yeah, just to go back, so, so the reason why I say it's a bold submission
Yeah.
May, may well be right.
Yes.
The reason that I say it's a bold submission is that you're taking a case which has not been free of criticism.
Yeah.
Uh, and you've been very candid about that. And then build on that the additional layer that you then read across from a case that's not been free of criticism to other statutory contexts, or at least other statutes.
Related to it.
Perhaps say the context is the same, but other statutes which they weren't even considering.
No, but my lord, that's, 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 I mean, that's a legitimate concern, I
So that, I mean, that, that's just, that's me just defending my use of the bold.
I wasn't attacking you. I wasn't attacking you.
I didn't mean that, but I didn't mean that as a, in a
No, no, I understand.
Way at all, I, I just mean it is bold because of that.
No, no, well, but can I just take, I mean, we'll, we'll check the point that my lady asked about, well, how wide does this go in the sense of other
Community care.
Yeah, yeah, in that context, so we'll see if we can get, I mean, I don't know what we'll be able to get you, but we'll try and get you something on that. Um, in a relatively neutral way, I'll try and agree with my learned friend. Um, he, indeed, he may be well placed to help answer the question, I can see him nodding.
Well, you, if there's anything, but as my lady says, um, definitely, um, um, limited to the
Yeah, yeah, we won't get into massive new submissions at all. But can I just, having parked that for now, can I just address my lord's concern that it's a bold, well, the, the question of the boldness, as it were. I mean, fir- first of all, Cornwall is obviously, as I've said a couple of times, it's, it's a pretty radical case. Um, it did, I don't think anyone anticipated, doesn't mean it's wrong, we must assume it's right, but it was undoubtedly quite a radical case in that sense. Secondly, there is no doubt. Obviously, obviously the Supreme Court was concerned with two very specific statutes, the 1989 Act and the 1948 Act. But there can be no doubt that it must read across in significant ways. So for example, suppose that the facts of Cornwall arose now. So that with the difference that at, at the age of 18, the P would be transitioning not to the 1948 Act, but to the Care Act. Well, surely, and the Secretary of State, I think, has decided many cases on this basis without challenge, surely the logic of Cornwall would apply to that situation as it does in, in, in the context specifically of the 1948 Act. So too must, um, must Cornwall apply, I submit, to a case where, for example, to some Mental Health Act cases. So suppose you have to, you have a situation where someone is provided with care, for the sake of argument, let's say it's under the Care Act, but it could have been under the Children Act, it doesn't really matter for these purposes. So they're, they're, you know, they, they start off in Camden, they're placed in Islington, to come back to my, my, um, go to examples. They're placed in Islington by Camden, then they are detained under the Mental, Mental Health Act. And then you have to decide where they were ordinarily resident immediately before that detention. Now, in that situation, I suggest, and the Secretary of State has certainly decided, cases on this basis.
Well, I'm, I'm not happy about that, I'm afraid. We, we, we have to, we have to be slightly careful about what, particularly in this case, what the Secretary of State thinks the law is.
Yes.
I mean, you, uh, the, the most you can say is, what, that Lord Carnworth must have appreciated that it would be read across?
Yeah, I mean, it's a Supreme Court decision, so
Yes.
He knows, he's taking it, um, well
Well, I, I mean, I
Can I, can I just
I follow that, whether that makes a difference.
Can I explain it in this way? On, on the logic of my learned friend's argument about what the ratio of Cornwall is, it would apply to these other situations. If my learned, my learned friend, the dispute between If my learned, my learned friend, the dispute between this is my wider ratio and his narrower ratio, if he's right, it will still apply to a case, because, because the sorts of cases I've envisaged, because as long as the first statute has a deeming provision, then the first statute will have preserved not merely responsibility, but will have preserved ordinary residence. And it's very difficult then to see why the logic of paragraphs fifty-eight and sixty don't apply to it. So-
The statute has a deeming provision.
Yes.
We know that.
Yes, but it doesn't matter, the point is, it doesn't, even if the, so, what matters is, it's really, suppose you've got a move from one statute to another, it could be a move, as it was in Cornwall, move from Children Act to nineteen forty-eight Act, it could be a move from Children Act to Care Act, it could be a move from Children Act to Mental Health Act, and so on. The deeming provision that matters, the one that is preserved, the one that Lord Carnworth is referring to in paragraph fifty-nine, on my learned friend's argument, is the, is the deeming provision in the first bit of legislation, in the Children Act, or the Care Act, or whatever it is, not in the second bit of legislation. And, as I say, I mean, I'm not asking you to positively decide the case on this basis, but there's no doubt that the Secretary of State has decided.
No, we could, I don't think we could.
No, no, of course, but, but I, so you're aware of it, is it?
I mean, we have, we have enough difficulty with the particular-
Of course, of course.
Situation that arises in this case.
But even if you, if you, as it were, approve my, or, or, on the judge's logic, or on the logic of my learned friend's argument, those cases would be caught. Sorry, which cases? Well, cases where, for example, someone is, starts under, under the Children Act, and then they're detained and-
I'm not sure this is a pointed reply, I'm troubled about it.
Well, no, I'm, okay, I can see it probably isn't, I mean, I've, I've sort of-
It's not something that's in your skeleton, and it's-
No, that's fair enough.
We have to be very careful.
Yeah.
Don't make up the law on the who.
I'm not, I'm only, yeah.
And, and I appreciate that that's a slightly vernacular expression that might encapsulate some of the criticisms of Lord Carnworth in Cornwall, but, but we have to try and tether this-
Yeah.
To, to the particular dispute that arises.
Fair enough, that's quite right.
There's a dispute between you as to what the ratio is, and that will be for us to decide whether the extent to which, effectively, the deeming provisions in the Acts under consideration were a significant element in the result.
Yeah.
And that, that I hope puts it neutral.
My lord, that, that's-
That is, I think, the point.
Yeah. I, I, I got carried away.
That's all right, I just, I just, I don't want, I don't want to get into-
No, no.
Hypothetical-
My lord is quite right, let me pull my horns in, as it were, but I just, can I just try and make this point without, I hope, trespassing too far? The point that I always meet, seeking to say something about, is my lord's concern this is all sort of very wide, and it's a bold submission and all of that, and the only point I'm really trying to make is that actually, the move that I'm inviting you to take, which is to say that the ratio is the wider ratio, not the narrow ratio, is going to affect a relatively small number of cases, because it's clear that Cornwall has quite wide implications, they can be dealt with in other cases. It's simply that it, it's not limited to cases where there's an actual deeming provision, as opposed to other cases where there's some other mechanism, as I've shown you in section one-one-seven-three, for fixing, for fixing responsibility by reference to ordinary residence at a point in time. That's, 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 that's the limit of the difference between us, and that is actually not that, I mean, it's, I'm not saying it's an important point, it is an important point, but it's, it's not actually that wide-ranging, that's the only point I'm really trying to make.
Yeah, okay, well, that, 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 that point I follow.
Yeah, but I, I did get carried away in making it.
That's all right, I'm just self-preservation.
No, no, quite right, quite right, quite right, and it's past four o'clock, and there we are. But, my lord, I think those are my submissions.
Right, okay, thank you very much. Right, well, thank you both very much, and thank you to those behind you. I must confess that I thought that because of the pre-reading we wouldn't take all day, but we have, and that's absolutely not a criticism, because I think the points that are raised here are important. We will obviously reserve our judgments. You are approaching the time of the term when it's not possible to promise that they'll be provided before the end of term, they may be, but they may not be, that will depend on the other commitments of the members of the Court. We will send out drafts in the usual way, that will be an opportunity for you to comment on our spelling and our grammar, but not on our reasoning. Once you have sent us back the typos and grammatical errors, then a final, final set of judgments can be prepared. Those would be handed down almost certainly electronically, and there's never a need to come anyway, but now that we're following again the electronic handout protocol, that will be how they will be handed down. Once you've got the draft, we would hope, indeed, in this case, I would expect, the parties to be able to agree the concomitant order, and the practice is to give you a date to send the typos back by, a slightly later date to agree the order, and then a date for the handout, which you don't need to attend. All right? Right, thank you both very much.